We're gonna go ahead and call the April fifteenth City Council meeting together. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for every rock, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, are there any announcements? Mayor, Chris? Nope, seeing none. Alright, we'll go ahead and read through these proclamations. Eric, would you read the first one? The Week of the Young Child.
Sure. Whereas the Early Learning Alliance Network in conjunction with the National Association of Education for young children are celebrating the week of the young child, April eighth through the twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas the working nation of working to promote and inspire high following early childhood experiences for our city's young citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children of Fisher's communities. And whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children birth through age eight who make a difference in the lives of young children of Fisher's deserve thanks and recognition, and whereas other policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and the prosperity of our society. Therefore, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fisher's, do hereby proclaim April eighth through the twelfth, two thousand nineteen as the week of the young child. And the City of Fisher's and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
Thank you, Eric. I know for this and all of them, the mayor will sign these and get the proclamations to each group that's recognized. I'll go ahead and read the second one, which is the Seek Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than a hundred years, and during the early twentieth century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms and lumber mills and mines and on the Oregon, Pacific, and Eastern Railroad. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth largest religion in the world, and today there are more than thirty million Sikhs worldwide and an estimated five hundred thousand Sikh Americans. And whereas Vaisakhi, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, is one of the most historically significant days of the year for Sikhs and is celebrated in April. And whereas the City of Fisher seeks to further diversify, divert, to further the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Therefore, I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fisher's, do hereby proclaim April as Seek Awareness Month, and the City of Fisher's and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it. Sign this third day of April, two thousand nineteen. Mayor, I don't know if we're missing the United Way, but I don't think--
That was pulled, actually.
Okay, very good. Last one, Pete will read the Arbor Day proclamation.
City of Fisher proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees, and whereas a holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas the City of Fisher's has expressed its intent to participate in Tree City USA program following standards outlined by the Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water and lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and the beauty of our community, and whereas the trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fisher's, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen as Arbor Day, and the City of Fisher's and all the residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
Thank you, Pete. So we also have a number of presentations. The first group that we'd like to recognize is the Fisher Speech Team, who are the state champions. Is there someone who is either the coach or the... Yes. Would you like to come up and say a few words and introduce your team? Thank you. Yeah, there should be a microphone there you can speak into.
Well, we do have, we have most of the team here represented this afternoon. Maybe you guys want to come up too, so everyone can see you. So, my name is Paul Kennedy. I'm the head speech and debate coach at Fisher's High School, and standing in front of you here, you see the three A state champion speech team. We won the state title for the fourth time in the last five years back in March. And what I think we would really like to make sure to say to everybody here this evening is a big thank you to our wonderful and supportive community. As a teacher and a coach at Fisher's High School, it's really like I'm cheating with the students that we get coming in as prepared as they are for the kind of thinking and public speaking skills that we require for our activity. It gives us a, you know, we start with a huge advantage, and that is a testament to the strength of this entire community and the support that you give our schools. So, thank you to all of you for continuing to support Fisher's schools and making this such a wonderful community for these students to grow up in. Thanks.
We have a quality of appreciation for all of you, and thank you for representing Fisher as well and being a good teacher.
Easy.
Let's photo mumble.
Okay, great. Congratulations, guys.
Next here. Okay. Yes, he's-- Go ahead, Eric. Eric's gonna make the next introduction.
Next up, the Fisher High School C-SPAN Student and Scholarship winners. Have a coach or team representatives would like to come up and share their experience?
Bring up the winners.
My name is Sophie Foley. I did, me and my partner Lauren Higginbotham did the C-SPAN Student Scholarship. Unfortunately, she is sick, so she cannot make it tonight, but we did this C-SPAN Student Scholarship, which was what constitutional amendment defines your American experience? And we chose the First Amendment, especially freedom of speech, and how it defines our experience on a country level and as a state, and we, what got second place?
And yet, we repeatedly hear about examples of hostility to free speech and viewpoint diversity on college campuses?
This is such an awful story. I cannot believe it's happening.
Actually, the First Amendment has been violated before on multiple occasions. As soon as the right was passed, not even ten years later, the Alien and Sedition Acts were instated. The Sedition Acts prohibited public opposition to the government where someone could be fined or imprisoned, and even though the government has tried to take it away, it's lasted as long as our Constitution has been instated.
And because of that, freedom of speech is the true definition of being an American.
That it is, and Congresswoman Susan Brooks can vouch for that.
Other countries, people don't have those opportunities and freedoms, and that's why people come here for those opportunities. So, we are a beacon of hope for many, many countries and people in the world who see just so many opportunities for us, and I think it's in large part because of freedom of speech.
We'll make the full video available to everybody to view as well.
Just, just a quick comment. I watched that on Facebook. I thought it was outstanding, by the way. They actually gave me a nice laugh in the afternoon when I had a chance to watch.
Just to clarify, you ranked second in the nation, is that correct? So, just to, second in the nation.
Mayor, are you going to--
Yep.
Okay, the next, yes.
I'm on it. I'm filling in for Dan Domsick, who departed the Parks Department here about a week and a half ago, but one of my favorite initiatives each year is the Mayor's Youth Council, where we try to inspire young people who want to be a part of biggest, something bigger than themselves, and really gain exposure to what it's like in public service. And so, over the course of the year, this was a competitive process to be a part of the Mayor's Youth Council. Those applications were screened, and they selected the individuals based on their application. These individuals get exposure to not only city government, but they also learn about the judicial system, they learn about the jails, they learn about the correctional facilities, they learn about nonprofit organizations. And each time that they come to one of these programs, whether it's learning about the fire department, police department, what have you, they're also tasked with a side project, and that side project is really a conversation about policy development and ideas and innovation. And this year, we had a series of different questions posed to the groups. They break into different groups, and then they have to deliver on these projects. Once the Deliverable was done, which was, I think, last week, they presented in front of our entire leadership team at the city, our department heads, if you will, and our department head scored the presentations, and we took the top two scores from those presentations, and they're here tonight to deliver their policy positions or ideas on a couple of different things. The two groups tonight represent actually two different efforts, two different questions that were asked. One of the questions was simply asked, what can Fisher's do to create better spaces and places in our city moving forward? And there's a group here to talk to you about that tonight. The other group was tasked with figuring out what are the global trends that will have the most impact on the City of Fisher's, and what should Fisher's do to position itself to be successful? So each presentation's about five to seven minutes, and I would ask the City Council to challenge them, ask them any questions you might have, and comment on their policy positions moving forward. The first group we will have come up is going to talk to you about better spaces and places. Did you guys come on up? It's a big group. Don't be intimidated.
We're very intimidating. How do you get it up, how do you get it up onto this screen? Oh, there it goes. Never mind.
You can pull that microphone down a little bit, too, if you need to.
Set a dig.
Make sure it's on, too. Is there a green light?
Yeah. Hello. We are part of the Creative Spaces and Places Group. We worked with Deputy Mayor McGrath throughout the course of this last school year, I guess, and to, we worked to further understand our community and further understand how we can be a better part of our community. First, we'll do a little introduction. My name is Erin Larkin. I'm going to HSC, and I am a senior.
My name is Jasmine Saney. I'm a junior, and I attend HSC.
My name is Laura Sancotto. I'm a senior, and I also attend HSC.
My name is Brianna Bird. I'm a senior, and I also attend HSC.
My name is Luke Rebeck. I'm a senior at Fisher High School.
My name is Luke Gilligan, and I'm a junior at Fisher High School.
My name is Ricky Helper, and I'm a junior at HSC.
My name's Emma Atwood, and I'm a junior at Fisher High School.
My name's Avery Murphy, and I'm a senior at Fisher's High School.
So first, of course, we would like to thank Deputy Mayor McGrath and Mayor's Youth Council for all that we've been given and all the opportunities we've had. Throughout the past few months, we were given chances to learn from our community and research more into them, but as a group, we asked questions like, how can we make Fisher's really feel like home, and how can we better our community through connections and through support? But primarily, we continually sought out the answer to the question of what makes Fisher's Fisher's?
Collectively as a group, we define Fisher's as a community-centered city, which should invest in creative spaces that foster these ideas, and these investments should be included through community events, businesses, parks, and sustainable artwork. Throughout our research here at Mayor's Youth Council, we continuously asked ourselves many questions, such as, why should we care about these investments in Fisher's, and what makes Fisher's so unique that's gonna make us want to come back in the next ten to fifteen years? Interestingly, we learned that both people and businesses in Fisher's want the same thing, and these investments within our community will help us grow.
When researching, we focused on how we can incorporate business and entrepreneurship into our creative space-making. We interviewed many different entrepreneurs and found that Fisher's is very entrepreneurial in spirit. We have opportunities such as Spark Fisher's and Launch Fisher's, but how can we make these, these perpetual opportunities to foster entrepreneurship and the daily actions of Fisher's? We want only not in, like, we want to not only, like, keep these Spark Fisher's, Launch Fisher's, and the farmers' market continuing, but we want to foster entrepreneurship and market them more as an entrepreneurial event instead of a get-together for the family. We also want to incorporate spaces such as pop-up shops, where entrepreneurs contest their ideas and learn before they launch their businesses. And we also have brilliant entrepreneurs in Fisher's, and we want to create a program or space where budding entrepreneurs can be mentioned, mentored, and learn from these successful business people. And we also want to incorporate art into the businesses we have, because we, those are still entrepreneurs as themselves, and we want to support them in their businesses and their endeavors.
So my business, or my research focus was about incorporating art into the Fisher's economy, and what I found was a study from the Center for Economics and Business Research highlighted the important role of the art sector in supporting the commercial creative industries. Drawing on academic research, the report concluded that the proximity to arts and culture can translate to higher wages and productivity through innovation and diffusion of ideas. Essentially, a focus on art and culture is an investment with a very strong return and can help to increase productivity in our workers. And continuing with this, encouraging community events in Fisher's that can bring outsiders to the city and create revenue for small businesses. For example, the Broad Ripple Art Fair brings, on average, sixteen thousand view visitors through the opportunity to engage, enlighten, and enhance their community through art education, participation, and observation. The income from the actual event is used to support year-round outreach classes that promote the creation and appreciation of art. Oh, and examples of how we would do this in Fisher's are through music events as well as pop-up movies in our parks.
So with this all being said, we want to figure out how to, oh, not that, how to incorporate art into our community. One thing we saw throughout our research was the parks in Fisher's are a huge thing that many Fisher's, many people in the Fisher's community really like to utilize. And so, with the question of what makes Fisher's Fisher's, incorporating that art was crucial. And so, having, like I mentioned, these arts in the parks is not only something to bring people together, but it can create this idea of Instagrammable places, which not only can be seen as attractive to younger generations, but also older generations as well. So, one way this can be done is through murals using community artists. Using community artists not only enhances this idea of fostering a community growth, but also enhancing the idea of having an interactive space that you can take pride in because somebody from your own community is doing it. And not only can we do this through murals, but we can do this through sculptures. When you're in Carmel, you know it's Carmel and the roundabouts by the sculptures in the middle of it, and what we want to do is kind of make our own little unique idea that is undeniably Fisher's, and so some ideas are to follow. So one thing that we were talking about was making Fisher's have more Instagrammable places, because teens and adults alike are attracted to social media. So how can we incorporate this into our parks? So the way that we can incorporate this into our parks is adding these social media opportunities or Instagrammable places. And this new era, technology is what drives people, the ability to go somewhere and show everyone. So we want to incorporate these Instagrammable places into Fisher's, such as things that bring people from out of town, like Broad Ripple, as you can see on all these Instagrammable places. We are going to add murals and all these different things to make Fisher's a place that more people from different places want to go to, to see what's happening in Fisher's.
One example of an Instagrammable place and more unique way to enhance the idea of murals is a sticker wall. This allows people to make their own mark on the wall. We suggest this be implemented in parks such as Brook School Park to incorporate parks into the social media. As demonstrated in Flatfork, hammock opportunities are an attraction to not only teens but families as well. Instituting hammock pulls can be done for under fifty dollars as a DIY project in parks that do not already naturally have hammock opportunities. This will provide a place for people to come and interact, as well as promote the parks and draw in families and teens.
So, a way to keep teens and people coming back to these spots is by giving them something new to come back to. Having murals that change allows for this, as well as a spot to incorporate the parks into pictures for social media. So our plan is to start these ideas in our most popular parks, so people can feel them out, and then eventually bring these ideas into our neighborhood parks and the open spaces we find in neighborhoods that are more unused, to bring these ideas closer to home, both physically and figuratively. And to tie all this off, we also want to keep in mind that it's important to be sustainable and environmentally conscious. And so, by incorporating environmentally friendly ideas such as recycled benches and other outdoor necessities, you can foster this idea of increasing recycling, then, instead of just kind of adding a little bit more recycling bins in the community. And so, one thing that's important to note is that ninety-seven percent, or excuse me, ninety-four percent of Americans support environment recycling efforts, and seventy-four percent believe that it should be made a priority. And so with this being said, kind of fostering this idea of being environmentally sustainable but in unique and creative ways really does foster that idea of being environmentally friendly. And so, some of these ways to make it more artistic and Instagrammable, as we mentioned before, is incorporating sustainable art. And so, this can be seen in a natural environment, as you can see with the sculpture, but this could also be done in a very DIY, kind of bring your family as a community get-together, and you can do these hanging plants, so to speak. And so, this hanging plant idea not only fosters this idea of being environmentally aware, environmentally conscious, but also make it very Instagrammable and unique. So ultimately, one of the biggest lessons that we learned throughout this is that neither us nor our leadership can be afraid of change. We can't be afraid of something new, because we must create an environment in our city where we are open to these creative spaces. If we let ourselves become a culture with leadership that is afraid to do something out of the ordinary, that is afraid to do something different, then we will never know how great Fisher's can truly be as a city. Younger generations like us are the future of this city. We're the future of Fisher's, and we're the future of the country. So, we want something to come back to. We want to come back to Fisher's when we're all grown. We want to bring our families and raise our families here, but we're not going to do that if there's nothing to come back to. So by listening to these ideas and by implementing some new artistic efforts into Fisher's that will make us more creative and more out of the ordinary, we will have something that we are excited to come back to, and we will truly create a city in Fisher's that is unique and that really makes us stand out in Indiana. So with that being said, we would ultimately like to say thank you again to everybody that has supported us along the way, and we are so excited to work with you and help move Fisher's forward, and we are now ready to answer any questions that you may have for us.
What do you guys think about the Art City Hall?
I love it. I think it's, I think it's adorable. I think it's a great way to bring more voices and more artists.
Should the walls be used to paint, like you guys--
Not against it.
I'm not against it. I would make the argument that by encouraging murals throughout our community, not only in the City of Fisher's, but we could even put these in our parks, it just kind of creates this undeniably Fisher's kind of vibe that can really be implemented all throughout the city and not just downtown Fisher's.
Society has seemed to put this idea in us that everything has to be clean-cut, and these walls have to be white, and they can't be fun, but I mean, why? Why can't Fisher's be that city that takes that stuff forward and makes it interesting, makes it unique, and makes it representative of its population?
Just one other quote. Almost every one of you used the word Instagram.
Yeah, that's a new social networking--
What about my generation who has no idea what that means?
Facebook-able?
Great job, guys. Well done.
Did they need a picture for Instagram?
First of all, I can't believe Luke, I can't believe Luke is that old. Luke grew up down the street from my son, and I can't believe he's standing there in a suit and tie.
When they get you on Instagram.
You guys, yeah, stand up here.
selfie with the mayor.
Mayor, you need to be up there.
Selfie with the mayor.
That's right. It's an Instagrammable moment.
For Instagram, hey, Scott, you need to do a selfie with them for Instagram, seriously. Not, not this lineup stuff. That doesn't go.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, Instagram, you need to get him doing a try selfie. That one Degeneres did. Remember that? That was cool. That's excellent. I love that.
So--
How do we get started? I love, I love that.
I would offer--
How do we get started?
To all of those who've received impressive awards, you're welcome--
We have one more--
Oh, well, we have more group. I'm sorry. That's right. I forgot. Thank you.
So, we'll wait till this group clears out. All right. We do have one more group, so this is a friendly competition between Leah and I. That group was her. She coached them. The next group is one of my team members. Yep, so-- The pressure's on. They have to represent. Keep in mind, their question was, what is a global trend that will have a profound impact on Fisher's, and how would Fisher's position itself to be successful going forward? So guys, come on up. Last but not least. Small but mighty.
All right. Hi, welcome. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present here. Thank you to the mayor specifically for helping us, guiding us through the, the guidance that he gave us was really valuable to our presentation and all the suggestions. Hi, my name's Amin.
I'm Mozen.
I'm Ziad Imran.
I'm Kifni.
And the global trend that we strongly believe will change the face of Fisher's in the future is automation, specifically the automation of menial jobs by artificial intelligence, computer programming, and robot machinery. For our project, we had four main goals. The first of the four main goals was to prove automation is a global trend and a problem. Secondly, we wanted to justify why Fisher's should care about that problem. And thirdly, come up with a solution to help mitigate incoming immediate problems, and following that, solutions to prevent recurring far-future problems.
Our first objective was to prove automation is a global trend and a problem. So automation is a global trend and will continue to be one. The McKinsey Global Institute estimated that around eight hundred million jobs worldwide will be lost by 2030, with forty to seventy million of these jobs being US jobs, approximately one-third of the US jobs total. Reports also suggest that forty-seven percent of the people employed-- Reports also suggest that 47% of the people employed in the US are at risk of losing their jobs. The jobs most at risk of being automated are jobs that require simple repetitive manual tasks, jobs that fall within the finance, manufacturing, sales, and legal work department.
For our second goal, we want to justify why Fishers should care. And all the following sectors compose a significant portion of Fishers' total employment. These sectors totaled up equate to 46.9%. Why should Fishers care? Manufacturing and retail compose 17.1% of jobs in Hamilton County, the two biggest sectors at risk of job loss due to automation. In a similar manner, computer automation of finance, business, and math work is relevant considering 15% of Fishers' employment is in these sectors, and automation in these sectors has been on the rise. Fishers should try not to stop automation because it is inevitable. Instead, it should utilize automation for efficiency and to boost the economy. It should also understand that jobs will be lost, but like after World War II, new jobs will be created. Fishers should help facilitate this shift, and we'll have to pay attention to three groups of people. The current working people who will inevitably lose their jobs, the current generations training for jobs that will be automated, and the far-future generations.
So our third objective was to create a solution to help mitigate the incoming and immediate problem. And the first thing that needs to be done is that we need to accept the fact that job loss is inevitable. Workers who've been working for 10, 15, 20 years in a specific sector will be replaced by automation. And when they get replaced, we need to create a safety net for these citizens, and it should be the responsibility of Fishers because, as stated earlier, about 47% of the total employment in Fishers is at risk of being replaced by automation. And when these workers lose their jobs, we should also help them by providing an education to retrain and retool them because, for example, when a manufacturing worker loses their job, they're unable to effectively work and find another job because their previous skillset does not allow them to do so. And in terms of the safety net, we need to create a policy which requires employers to send reports of job loss and causes. And when we get these reports, we need to identify longtime workers who have been replaced by automation, and then contact and communicate with these workers to assess their situation. And based on the assessment, we should then assist them, and the amount of that depends on the job availability, the financial standing, and the education. So what do we mean by that? Depending on the situation, if they have a poor financial standing, we should provide them a grant for a training for a stable, low-underemployment job. We should also highly consider apprenticeship training, which will allow workers to train and understand the parts of the job for low-skill jobs. We should also accept the fact that there obviously won't be one solution for everything, and we need to at least have retraining options available for everyone and financial assistance for those who need it. So what do we currently want you to do? Prep work for the policy includes contacting employers to have them send reports of job loss, contacting possible training schools to assure retraining options, and when reports of automation replacing jobs come in, we should enact the policy, contact those employees, and communicate with them.
So the fourth part of our presentation is creating a solution to help prevent recurring far-future problems. So the first thing we need to do is ask reflective questions about the future. Questions like, what kind of work will people be doing in the next five, 10, 15, and 20 years? Do emerging jobs provide the stability that workers expect? And what are the best ways to empower our workers with the skills and opportunities they need to succeed? Our second step should be to deter people from entering fields that may be automated in the near future. And this is more of a preventative policy because the last thing we want is for students to be going to college racking up huge amounts of debt only to be in a field that may be automated in the near future. And it's important to note here that plans for a prevention policy need to start now in order to be effective in the future. We need to be able to pass legislation, enact policies now, so that when automation begins to significantly impact job loss, that we're prepared for. So one important thing to note here again is that college education does not always save people from job loss. In fact, among recent college graduates, the unemployment rate is an astounding 44%. Rather than just pushing high schoolers to pursue post-high school education, we need to put more emphasis on college degrees that have stable employment rates. And this is important because college over the last 34 years has gotten two times more expensive, which brings us into our next point, viewing trade school as an effective alternative, technical, vocational, and apprenticeship work. So one big plus of this is that it's non-repetitive, and this work will not be automated in the near future, and jobs such as plumbers, AC unit repairs, et cetera. And another big plus is that students won't rack up nearly as much debt as if they would in college, because it's a lot cheaper and easier to afford. However, only 6% of American high schoolers are in this training, even though the employment is relatively more stable. So to sum up, although we should view college as the primary way to educate and retool people, we need to look at the other side of the same coin and educate them about the potential costs and risks. And if necessary, view trade school as an effective alternative. Because again, since 1985, the college education inflation rate has grown over 500% of what it used to be. And looking at the other side of this coin, how would we approach the situation? How would we want to include this other option, which is one of many options that we're proposing? How do we want to do this? We want to include an educated policy. We don't want something that should be forced upon people. But to begin with, we want to talk about educational seminars. Firstly, we want to hire professionals to talk to not only high school students, but also parents. Parents have a negative stigma and an overall social stigma towards trade school. It's not something that you immediately think about when you think about a stable future. And having professionals to talk to those people, including people with firsthand experience, can really resonate with those parents and resonate with the students as well, because students aren't necessarily looking at trade school as their number-one option. We definitely want to include financial advising appropriation. As Imran said, we don't want people racking up debt, and we want them to understand that. We want to sympathize with them and also give them another option. And overall, we're discouraging people, although it is true, we are discouraging people going to college for unreliable degrees that may be automated in the future. We want to emphasize degrees that are stable, such as STEM jobs or STEM degrees. And part of that communication aspect is contacting and communicating with high school counselors. If students are hearing that same source of information from multiple sources of people, then it will really stick with them. We should be able to contact with those counselors and contact with the teachers, and not just have a one-day career day where everything is thrown on them at once. We should have it multiple times throughout the year, especially for students who are susceptible to those social stigmas where they don't view trade school as a really good alternative. And thirdly, if they do decide to change their mind, we do want to have a program in place to be able to allow them to go to trade school or choose another path that they so choose. And as more students do choose trade school over the other, then the social stigma will decrease. As naturally, when other people start doing it, the domino effect, as you hear many people talk about, when one person starts doing it, another person will as well. So if that doesn't appeal to you as necessarily as good it may look or sound, there is the For the Greater Good Initiative, which would include altering costs for different college degrees depending on the underemployment rate. If you think it's so necessary, we could raise costs for degrees that are more stable and also raise costs for degrees that are less stable, and then lower costs for degrees that are stable. As consumer demand, you know, if it's lower cost, then more people will be open to that idea. To kind of conclude, we know that job loss is inevitable, and we don't want to really stop that from happening. We want to embrace it. And to embrace it, we're going to have to care for the people that will be affected, and then also care for the people that will be affected in the far future. I want to thank every one of you for listening to our presentation, and especially for the mayor as well, and Dan Domcik, although he's not here, he helped us a great time. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Yeah, the great presentation, guys. First of all, I love it because it was the right half of the brain versus the left half of the brain. That was distinctly obvious as you listened to the groups. But my question for you guys is, this is a pretty good problem. So, you know, if you're going to tackle this burden which you guys are facing, which you guys kind of talked about, who should bear the bigger burden? Should it be the public or the private side, and why?
I think it would be kind of almost half and half, because as it is right now, the social stigma is really strong, but at the same time, we don't want there to be no effort from your side of the coin. I think it would be almost half and half, with maybe a little bit of edge towards the policymaking, because we do want the policies to kind of enforce it. It's a problem that needs to be addressed, and if the problem isn't addressed, then there will be more issues arise. As the problem happens, as the problem gets worse over the course of many years, we can't just rely on individuals and individual schools to be able to solve the problem themselves.
Other questions for the team?
Yeah, a couple.
What uses the data that you use, unless they have 100 million people, and now we're going to be fully automated? Are we only going to need 20 million people? And what do we do with the rest of those people, whether they're trained or not? Are you saying we're going to a situation where the birth rate better start slowing down? Or were you adding too many people for no jobs?
That same fear came up after World War II, and we talked about it a little bit. After World War II, you see robot machinery coming up, and people are scared for their lives. People are wondering if they're going to have to live on the streets because they don't have a job. And just after World War II, the economy came back. Jobs were created in sectors that people never thought would happen. And I mean, looking into the future, we can see those jobs. Trade school is such, it's a good option, and people don't think of it as a good option. You think, you go from, after World War II, new jobs in technology were created, not new jobs in something that was seen as lower class. I mean, when you look at the future, like Imran said, we want to look at jobs that, what will people be in 10 years? What will people be working in in 10 years? Which sectors are thriving? And that's really what we try to focus on, specifically with trade school, but there are other sectors in technology coming up on the rise.
I just want to applaud every, you're speaking my language as far as there are changes in technology, changes in your lifetime, really even in my lifetime, because you're changing so quickly. So I think looking at trade schools, that's exactly changing that stigma, because as I've traveled the globe, I've been able to see some areas you get a four-year degree, and then other areas here, it's viewed negatively, and it really shouldn't be. So I think in our school system, if we can add that, maybe even emergent programs, foreign languages, you understand things a little bit better. So I just want to applaud what you said. You're kind of speaking my language, and it's great to hear that. And the second thing is, I'm sorry, Steve, but one of the jobs that might be extinct, I saw a lawyer, so.
2:30.
Yeah. Okay, you'll make it, but you know, some.
They didn't say city council.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you very much.
Great job, guys. Well done.
You need an Instagrammable moment.
Mayor, have any of the certification that they would be supporting? Oh, they should, I think.
Yeah.
We've just volunteered here for it.
Would you like us to vote on which team was?
Not 34 or 15 ones.
Thank you all.
And Rich, we have one other special guest tonight. I know we need to move things along, but we have former Attorney General of the State of Indiana, Steve Carter's here tonight as a representative from Senator Mike Braun's campaign, or I should say his office now. But maybe, Steve, if you could just introduce yourself, because he's been going around trying to build relationships with elected officials in case there's ever any concerns that need to be addressed. I'll turn it over to Steve. And one quick thing, Steve, when I was an intern here, and we were debating whether it'd become a town or a city, Steve facilitated that conversation. He was one of the first people I ever worked with here at the county of Fishers on issues. So we go back.
Look where you are now. Well, you really did the introduction well, Mayor. I'm working with US Senator Mike Braun. I'm his senior advisor and central Indiana director. Central Indiana director role, I'm reaching out to many communities. I've met with many of the executives and want to reach out, council members also. Should you have issues arise that you want to make our office aware of, you can feel free to do that through me. If you know somebody else in the office, I'm not a very territorial person, so go ahead and communicate with them, but I'll be happy to do that. And from time to time, if there are issues that you might need help from the Senate office, don't hesitate to reach out to us. And I think that that's likely in a growing community like yours. Fortunately, we do have a senator who was involved in the distribution business, so he understands logistics, infrastructure, served most of his time, and he did want me to tell you that he appreciates your service in local government. He spent a lot of time on his local school board before spending about three years with the state legislature in that role, and actually an opportunity to work on some infrastructure legislation. So we look forward to working with you. I'll leave my business card here, which has some contact information, and be happy to work with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for what you're doing for us in Indiana. John Weingart is not here, but is there another member of the Finance Committee that would like to say a few words?
We met on the Finance Committee, and the, let me get the number of, I think it's number 12, was recommended for approval to the council. We also have been discussing, we had RFPs out for our investment advisor that would be handling our investments. The Controller's Office has done a fantastic job of working through those RFPs, gathering those RFPs. They have it narrowed down to two, and will be doing further interviews with those two finalists in that to determine which we think could, which they think could better serve the residents of Fishers.
Thank you, Selena.
You're welcome.
Next is number six, the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, second by Eric, a motion made by Pete, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First item in the economic development, item R041519. Megan?
Oh, boy. Good evening, council members. Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. Our first item tonight is the confirmatory resolution for 10500 Crosspoint Boulevard. This is a building that is now owned by DMC Insurance. They purchased the building last year, and as plans for their expansion and adding significant headcount to their building, they have some extensive renovations that they need to do to the building. They plan on adding an additional 50 employees, and as a way to help with those costs, the building had a significant amount of delayed and offset maintenance. We are asking for your approval, and final approval for the five-year, 100% real property tax abatement. This is only for the new increment that will come as a result of the renovations. So the existing assessed value and taxes that are there will continue through, and it would just be this increment, if any, that would result from the renovations. The first action by the city council was in December of 2018 for the declaratory resolution. In January, council approved the statement of benefits for DMC Insurance, and this is, again, our final action for this. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions by council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Next, item R041519E. Oh, I'm sorry, D. D. That's okay, my old agenda.
So this resolution is the first of two related to a new project that was announced last week. Crew Car Wash has been looking for a location for a new car wash in Fishers for quite some time, and as a result, great partnership with the city and the crew team, some of whom are here tonight that I'd like to introduce in a moment. They have located a spot for their new corporate headquarters and car wash just north of 116th Street on Exit 5 Parkway. As part of this development, tonight, this first item is for the approval of the economic development agreement. And as part of this, Crew Car Wash is committing to a $6 million investment. That's just for the new headquarters office building, approximately 40,000 square feet. This could increase in size of the office building, obviously the new car wash, and then they have approximately 33 full-time employees who are employed out of their corporate headquarters. This will probably increase as well as they continue to grow their footprint throughout the country. The great thing about this facility is they also do R&amp;D on new equipment that they then put into their car washes. So this really will be an innovation and hub center for activity for them. There's also some discussions underway with IOT Lab, which is exactly the type of collaboration and partnership that we'd like to see. So the economic development for your consideration is for a 10-year, 100% real property tax abatement. So the economic development for your consideration is for a 10-year 100% real property tax abatement. This is only for the 40,000-square-foot headquarters building. And then also a waiver of impact fees for both the office site and the car wash site. And Justin, if you'd like to come up and say a couple of words for, to council?
Good evening, for the record, Justin Fur. I'm the Director of Real Estate from Crew Car Wash at, uh, 10251 Hague Road, actually an Indianapolis address. We could say we're moving.
There you go.
Uh, technically Fishers. But I'm happy to be here and have the opportunity to partner with the City of Fishers. Uh, we're a 70-year-old family business, uh, third generation, still owned by the, by the family, and have been located here in Fishers for 15 years. So excited to continue that and continue to grow our business here in, in Fishers. Uh, I live in Fishers, as does our third-generation owner. So we're excited to, uh, keep this and grow this here in Fishers. Uh, as far as timing goes, a little bit of insight there. So we're, uh, we're working real hard in the hopes to open the car wash in early next year, uh, 2020. And then the, the office building to follow after that would probably open in 2021, uh, hopefully earlier in 2021 than later. So, uh, we'll be back, uh, before the Plan Commission and other things, hopefully, uh, to present and share more details at that time.
And, and Justin, I just want to make a quick comment if I can. Uh, you, you know, this, this particular issue got a lot of publicity for a while through Fishers, and a lot of emails back and forth, a number of articles written on it. I think this is an absolute testament to, you know, when two groups come together to solve the problem, Fishers is the right place to work with. I want to compliment the mayor and staff, and Megan, and everybody else. I want to compliment you and Steve and the entire team at Crew Car Wash, Bill, for, for working to find a suitable solution that fits in with a fit and finish, and, and really the, the, the way that we want to see the, the, the city move forward. I think it's Crew Car Wash, uh, an unbelievable platform for, you know, kind of a high-profile area to show their headquarters. People were shocked to find out that you guys actually were headquartered in Fishers. Probably, uh, Dr. But I can't be, you know, more ecstatic really about what's going to come out of this thing from where we started to where we ended up. And, and again, it's just a testament to Scott and the staff, and Megan, and, and you guys for really working through this issue and finding just a, a terrific win-win location, I think, for everybody.
I agree, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. That's good. Any other question?
Yeah, a couple, a couple things real quick. And, and Megan, I thi, I think he mentioned it, but, um, if this is approved, this is more, um, the economics, but then as far as the site plan and things like that, that'll go through the Plan Commission, at least, maybe the council, but more the Plan Commission?
Correct.
Because we've talked independently just about, um, streets around, concrete streets, things like that, just for the upkeep, the site, the architecture. And I don't want to, we've got a long agenda, so I know that it'll come back for those. And then the other thing, Justin, we mentioned, was your current building, um, it's, it's, uh, it's in a good location. Uh, it's also, um, I think on a decent amount of acreage, so you feel like it could move to a new buyer? And that's really what your intention is, is to put it up for sale?
Yes.
And then somebody else could come along and, and probably reuse that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, no other questions? I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Uh, motion by Pete, is there a second? Second by Cecilia? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Oh, one abstention, I'm sorry. Should have noted that. Thank you. Uh, item nine, R-041519E.
Yes, so the second portion to this project is the first step for the abatement approval, which is the declaratory resolution, um, declaring the site an economic revitalization area. Similar to DMC Insurance, um, we will come back to council for the confirmatory, and then also the, um, approval of the statement of benefits. Again, happy to answer any questions on this one.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Pete?
I'll second.
Second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And obtained, one abstention. Thank you again, Megan. Item 10, 031819F. Lindsay?
Hi, good evening, Council, Lindsey Bennett, Assistant City Attorney here on the Weed and Grass Ordinance, um, for second and third reading. Uh, we just changed from first reading just some minor language. It says, um, controlled and maintained heather in section seven of the amendment. Um, in reviewing this today, though, I realized that there is, um, one word missing in there that I, I think should be added, and that is landscape. So it would say grasses or landscape intended to provide a teeing ground fairway, rough, controlled and maintained heather hazard or putting area for a golf course that's in operation. So at the risk of belaboring this ordinance, I would say, um, I would ask that, um, we just have second reading and allow me to go and make that change and bring it back for third reading, because I think it is going to be a key change, um, for the enforcement of this ordinance.
Okay. Are, are there, do we have any, uh, public comments here?
Want you?
No? Okay. Well, very good, Lindsey.
I have second reading.
Oh, sorry.
Is that all we need to do?
Okay. Second reading?
We look forward to talking about weeds at the next meeting with you, Lindsey.
Well, I love coming here. It was really probably intentional.
The only thing I would like to say is, I've had a fair amount of interaction with Lindsey about this, is I think, uh, she's done a very good job striking a balance between, uh, some of the concerns that were raised, and also, um, you know, and that related to the, the length of the grass. But there was also a balance of what happens naturally in some of these golf courses with heather. So I think she's done a very good job. And while, while I know that, uh, it's difficult at times to reach that balance, I think, I think this ordinance does that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, motion made by Pete.
Second, second reading only. She needed to correct some things and then bring it back for a third, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I just need to add this, the language, or landscape after grasses here, just to make sure we make that distinction. I am happy to do that, too.
Okay. So very good, second reading?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, 041519E.
Good evening, for the record, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources. Uh, tonight, I'm here to propose a amendment to the 2019 salary ordinance. Uh, this amendment would propose, uh, adding a new position title of Records Manager, which is under the Police Department. Uh, this position would be replacing a previously held, uh, role by a sworn officer, so not a, uh, new, uh, position, but just a backfill in this regard. Uh, the other piece of the amendment would propose adding a new title of Fellow, which would be, uh, filling a position, uh, newly created Public Administration Fellowship, uh, which would be a one-year, uh, term, and, uh, would be, um, basically vacated by the, or, uh, budget would fill that by the, the vacated Assistant Director Position of Economic Development. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ethan?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete?
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you, Ethan. Item 12, 041519F.
Going back to that last one.
Oh, sorry.
Did we suspend the rules on that? It is an ordinance amendment.
Was that a, just a first one we need to suspend first?
You do. So have three readings. If your intent was to approve it, can you?
Okay, we'll go.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Second.
Second, uh, first, the motion made by Pete to suspend the rules, second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Now a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Didn't have the 1, 2, 3 in there, Chris. It threw me.
There'd be no way we could automate that.
As long as you're not automated, I'm going to be automated.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, I am here, um, on item number 12, the, which is essentially a lease deal between the Town Hall Building Corp. and the Redevelopment Commission on behalf of the City of Fishers. And this is part of the Northside Project Agreement for Downtown with Browning Development that was approved by the council in March. And what this does is pledges lease rental payments for the public garage in the land acquisition portion. Um, this is also payable. The pledge is lit, uh, local income tax revenue. Um, as we discussed at Finance Committee, the pledge of lit is essentially a security that we do for bond rating, uh, when we go out, and for people to buy the bond. This is going to be payable from the TIF, from the downtown TIF. We do not expect ever to have to use any of the actual lit pledge. It is, again, just kind of a security backing. Um, if there are no questions, I will ask to suspend the rules and pass on first reading.
And this is essentially the same thing as what we do sometimes with a property tax backup that acts like a belt and suspenders agreement, really, to the lenders, which make the bonds very marketable.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
And, and Lisa, as, as we also talked about in Finance Committee, that, that TIF generation is, is very healthy, correct?
Yes, yes, that, there's more than enough in that TIF to support these, this debt service for this bond, yes.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Pete made a motion, second by Todd. All in favor to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Pete?
Second.
Second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Very good.
Thank you.
Counsel, before we go on, um, I had a misstep with item number seven, the confirmatory resolution for DMC Insurance. We had a statutory required public hearing, so if you wouldn't mind, if we could have a motion to reconsider, and then if we could go and hold the statutory required public hearing, see if anybody wants to come speak with respect to that item? And if not, you can go ahead and approve that.
Do we need to do that for nine, then, Chris, too?
No, because nine was a declaratory resolution.
Then I'll make a motion to reopen item number seven for further discussion?
Okay, motion by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Very good, so it's.
And then if you go and open the public hearing.
Now that it's open, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. So do we need to make another motion again?
That would be great.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Second, or opposed? No, thank you. Very good.
You're doing great.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? All right. Item 13, R-041519.
Uh, good evening, Kevin Stotts, Assistant Director in the Planning and Zoning Department. Uh, the city is currently working on two projects that are going through the Technical Advisory Committee Plan Review Process. Uh, the first one is the Amp West Parking Lot, which will be constructed just outside of City Hall here, outside of the municipal drive loop. It, uh, will be located between the two detention ponds. And I call that out because a portion of that area is within the emergency overflow area between the two detention areas. So within that, with that in mind, the City of Fishers is requesting exemptions from all the provisions of the UTO, uh, to help facilitate the project schedule, budget, and security needs. Uh, we have outlined that, uh, the parking lot perimeter landscaping, interior landscaping islands, and then a, a slight adjustment to the parking space width will help, uh, keep this area clear of the overflow. So with that in mind, we would ask that, uh, you approve this exemption request.
This doesn't require a public hearing? Any questions by council?
There's no question. This one kind of goes along with the next one, too, that Kevin's going to introduce, but I'll make a motion to approve item 13.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion passes. Item 041519A.
Uh, thank you again, Kevin Stotts, and that's, that is an accurate statement. The second item is for our fire station, which is currently going through the Plan Review Process. We would ask the same, uh, provisions be applied and exemptions to this development as we work through the Technical Advisory Committee. We have outlined a, a handful of items that we've caught through Plan Review, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about those items. Uh, but at this time, we would ask for the exemptions of this project as well.
Uh, again, uh, motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete?
Second. Or go ahead.
Second by Selena. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, 031819A.
For the record, Jesse Beauchel, Planner 2, Planning and Zoning. The item that you have before you tonight is an item that we brought to you last month, which was the Shamrock Offices PUD. Um, we continued the item due to the architecture concerns, and so I just want to reintroduce it to you and show the updated revisions. Project's going to be located at 12244 East 116th Street. It's a 1.97 acre parcel that was the former home of Rita's backyard. It is currently zoned C2C. Um, it was zoned that way so that the previous owner could operate the various businesses on that site. Overview, the petitioner is seeking to rezone the property from C2C to PUDC, restricting the uses to C1 commercial, and has proposed a single-story, uh, just shy of 15,000-square-foot multi-tenant residential-style office building. Uh, the petitioner received PUD Committee approval on February 6th, and also received unanimous Plan Commission approval on February 6th as well. Just to give you the concept aerial of how the site plan will, uh, lay out, it will be connected to the Simplidental PUD to the, to the west, and will have a, a connection. Site plan, again, showing you the landscaping. This is the original elevation that we brought to you last month that raised concerns due to the, not thinking that it was residential in nature. Uh, we worked diligently with the petitioner, and this is the revisions that we received, which is much better and more residential in nature and character, and fits more with the vital chiropractic that is also next door. And the ordinance points of interest, uh, the architectural standards, lighting standards, parking standards, open space standards, and the service hours are more stringent than what we require by our UDO, so it will be more conducive to the residential area that surrounds it. Staff comments, uh, we would, we're supportive of the seat, the rezone from C2C to PUDC, restricting the uses to C1. The C1 requires stricter development standards and is more restrictive on allowed uses. And this ordinance sets standards that will be more conducive to the surrounding residential uses. So saying that, staff recommends approval of ordinance number 031819A, and recommends approval of the revised architecture. And the petitioner is here if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments by council?
Uh, first of all, Greg, thank you very much to, I think, you did a fantastic job. Um, just revamping it just slightly enough to where I believe it blends in with the residential area and with the other development you did, uh, just to the west of that. So I think it's much better, and I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve if.
Second.
Yeah, motion, motion to approve.
Now that Todd's happy, so.
Someone else doesn't have anything.
Did David make the motion?
Todd made the motion, I seconded.
All right, there we are. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16, 041519.
Good evening, for the record, Ross Hillary, Planner 2, here with the City of Fishers. Uh, tonight, before you have ordinance, uh, 041519, which is the College Park Church, uh, Fishers Annexation. Uh, the College Park Church, uh, Fishers Annexation is located at the intersection of 126, um, and Pennington Road, uh, with the common address of 13222, uh, East 126th Street. It's a lot of 2s right there. Um, a little background, it's approximately 19.81 acres, currently zoned R2, um, and is located in City Council District 6, which is, uh, the northeast. Something that is, uh, just a little noteworthy on this one, the ILP for College Park Church, Something that is just a little noteworthy on this one, the ILP for College Park Church was released in March twenty nineteen, and they're currently going through the building process of their approximately five million dollar church that they're building there. Timeline on this project, we're looking at first and second reading tonight, as well as a public hearing. You'll see the fiscal plan and the third reading at the May twentieth council. And pending the approval of the annexation, we'll have the earliest effective date would be January first of twenty twenty due to the upcoming census. We did not get any public comments back on this. So with that, we recommend the combined first and second reading and to hold a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Since it is a public hearing, are there any members of the public that wish to speak? If so, we'll have you introduce yourself, state your name and address, and you'd have three minutes for your presentation or questions. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions by counsel?
The only question I have, and this only, and I believe the answer is gonna be yes, but there is no contiguity problems in terms of this voluntary annexation into the City of Fishers?
Correct, they are more than the two point five percent.
I learned after the fact that we've got a development that happened out along Southeastern Boulevard at one point in time that was contingent upon getting other properties, which we thought we would get, and we didn't, and they're not in the City of Fishers. So those are things I want to try to avoid as we move forward to the future before we let those things occur. So that was the only question.
Sure.
There's no other questions, I'll make a motion at first reading.
Most of your first.
First and second reading.
I do appreciate the irony of Pete Peterson being the voice for annexation in the City of Fishers.
Many of my constituents appreciate that, too, Scott, so.
All right, Pete's made a motion. Is there a second? Second by Eric.
It's the only person that I can read.
Oh, that's true.
They gotta bring it back.
All right. Thank you. Item seventeen, zero four one five one nine A.
Again, Ross Hillary, Planner Two, here. Before you tonight, ordinance number zero four one five one nine A, which is the Godwarda, Jaunt, Amrit, Parschkish Annexation. It's a little difficult, so I'll say it that one time. The annexation is located at one four eight eight zero East ninety-sixth Street, just north of ninety-sixth Street and west of the Belmont Place at Brooks Park Division. It is approximately seven point eight acres. It is also zoned R two. It is a place of worship. It is located in City Council District One. Similar to the previous annexation, you'll see the first and second public hearing tonight, fiscal plan and third reading in May, and then that effective annexation date would be January first. There was no public comments back on this either, so with that, we recommend first and second reading and public hearing.
Thank you, Ross. Again, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions by counsel?
Same question, Ross. It's not stranded, right? We're not?
Nope, that Belmont Place is surrounding it.
My thought.
Any other questions, comments? Motion?
Motion at first and second reading.
Thank you. Okay, item eighteen, zero four one five one nine B.
For the record, again, Jesse Bochel, Planner Two, here. Item that you have before you is a text amendment to the Marina Village PUD. This is located at nine six nine three Marina Village Drive, which is located off of Fall Creek Road. It's just back in that area around where Puccini's is around Geist. Subject site is located in the Marina Village PUD that was approved in two thousand and three under the Noblesville jurisdiction. And in two thousand and sixteen, the petitioner received approval of a text amendment to amend the plat and development standards for seven blocks lots, creating B, C, D, F, G, O, and P. The text amendment that we have before you tonight, that they had then was to allow for one single-family home to be built on each lot rather than to read the required two. And the petitioner is proposing a text amendment to amend the plat for block I to become a replatted lot R eight, and the development standards to allow one single-family home to be built on the replatted lot R eight. Ordinance points of interest, block I will become replatted lot R eight. It's a one-single-family home on a lot block lines of lot R eight, so it will, in the minimum lot width, reduce from one hundred and fifty feet to fifty feet, and the minimum square footage of the home to be constructed on lot R eight will be twenty-four hundred square feet. As you can see in the red, that is the replatted lot R eight. And the proposed elevations are conducive with what exists there now with the single-family homes, and also matches the architecture of the condos that exist there as well. And they have worked with staff on this as well. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance number zero four one eight one nine B as the text amendment is consistent with the text amendment approved in two thousand and sixteen. Do you have any questions? The petitioner is also here if you would like to ask them anything.
So we had the public hearing at the Planning Commission and.
In March.
Okay, what was the vote there? Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. It's kind of a stranded lot out there. I think they did a great job in terms of kind of peeling it all back together and finding a product not only that that is suitable to the community around it, but a product that's gonna sell, so I was well for it, so.
Any other questions or comments?
But this is still essentially, though, it's kind when you go come back further from Wolfies, whatever, blue heron, I still call it the blue heron. But it's got the side-by-side condos, and then they changed these six or seven lots, and this is an additional change.
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Right.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve if there's no other questions.
A second.
Motion by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post? Very good.
Aye, thank you.
All right, item nineteen, zero four one five one nine C. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you, so Jeffrey Cummings with Remax Complete is requesting a rezone of the property at one three five eight nine East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street from R two residential to C one commercial to accommodate a remodel of an existing home into a real estate office. So the subject property is located on the south side of one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, west of Oleo Road, near Hamilton Southeastern High School. The property is currently zoned R two and is surrounded by R two zoning, as shown here on the zoning map. To the north of this property, across from one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, is an estate residential lot. To the east and south is the Grace Community Church of Hamilton County, and to the west is an addition, another residential property that is currently for sale. Although surrounded by residential zoning, this property sits just west of Oleo Road, where many institutional office-type uses are located. The property is currently outside of city limits, but does meet the annexation requirements. So here you can see the existing site. There's currently a residential home with a detached garage on the property. The garage is proposed to be demolished with this remodel. Here are the proposed improvements. So the remodel would be an addition, and the building would be thirty-four hundred square feet. Office building would be the outcome of that. There are thirteen proposed parking spaces, all behind the building, including two ADA spaces. The existing drive will remain, but will be widened to meet the minimum requirements for a commercial drive. Hours of operation are gonna be nine to five, Monday through Friday. Because of the low intensity of this real estate office, traffic is not expected to be a concern, as confirmed by the city's engineering department. The house is currently on well and septic, but the petitioner would be required to hook up to water and sewer if for the change of use and for the structural addition. So here is the floor plan of the remodel. So there's various office rooms proposed in this building. They are going to accommodate approximately four employees, fifteen realtors, mostly of which work from home, and then some additional associates. They'll also be updating the exterior of the building, so the photo shows what the existing structure looks like, and then the black and white images are the proposed elevations. Keeping the existing home will ensure the structure is compatible with the neighboring residential uses. So the C one district, which this is what it's proposed to be rezoned to, is established to provide for development of professional and office-type businesses, which may serve as a buffer between residential and more intense commercial districts. Staff believes this real estate office is a good fit for the area and will complement the existing school and church uses along Oleo, as well as the surrounding residential to the west. Plan Commission did held a public hearing on March sixth and sent a favorable recommendation to counsel with the following conditions: that the petitioner voluntarily annex into city limits, that any signage or lighting have be residential in character, and that the uses be limited to C one office uses only. Staff does recommend that counsel approve the rezone with the conditions mentioned. The petitioner, Jeffrey Cummings, is also here to give a short presentation.
Good evening, City Council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present, along with Megan Schaefer, our request for rezoning the property at one three five eight nine East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. We are privileged to be a part of a great community in Fishers, a community positioned for growth and prosperity, a truly great city to live, work, and play. As a result of the work that has been done by the mayor, this commission, and the city planning group, we are experiencing a significant increase in our business, which prompted me to purchase the property on one hundred and twenty-sixth Street so I can continue to grow my business and be a premier service provider to the residents of Fishers. Our business is a Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM business. The amount of traffic that our business would bring to the property is minimal. Most of our agents work outside the office. We only have five full-time office people in the office on any given day, with agents coming and going as necessary. We have taken great strides to create a design plan that preserves the residential integrity of the property, with all the construction being focused towards the rear of the building. Appropriate signage and landscape plans to complement and enhance the property. Rear parking and a sightline that is visually appealing from the street level. It is our hope to begin construction upon approval of our rezoning request, with construction to be completed by early two thousand and twenty. It is important for us to be great neighbors, community contributors, and service providers to the residents of Fishers. We have one simple goal, to make home buying and selling easier for the Fishers community. I appreciate you approving our request for rezoning of this property. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions or comments? This is not a public hearing. We've had the public hearing at Planning Commission, but are there any additional questions or comments for Jeff?
Just a couple of questions, real quick. Nothing against, I'm just trying to to make sure I understand, and maybe more for Ms. Schaefer, but the, and I'm glad you guys limited the C one to offices, so basically, and I should have looked at the list, but again, that's probably real estate, insurance, law, which lawyers will be going away, we found out tonight. But those types of office uses. So you've got the C one, you've got all sorts of uses, so it's very specific as to what offices are, I guess.
So with the UDO update, there were some uses that are now permitted within that C one zoning district that we would want to restrict on this property. So the office uses that would be allowed under that condition would be those that you mentioned, but also medical offices would also be a permitted use.
Okay. And then I'm just trying to think through when this, so when you go all the way to the corner, so it'd be the southwest corner of one hundred and twenty-sixth and Oleo, does Grace Church, it almost looks like their boundary goes to the corner.
The east and the south.
Okay, and then that's R two, but it's probably R two because churches can go in any district, and they really didn't modify. So that's why it shows as R two. That's why when I first read it, it's R two, but it's really not. It's a church use.
Yep, so under the previous UDO, when Grace Church was built, the church was allowed in the R two zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I guess my comment is, I was the sole no vote on this, had nothing to do with the business at all, and never an issue with the business. I think you guys are doing a great job and know you guys very well, and I think could use you guys to buy a house at one point in time. So it's not reflective of that. My deal is, is we've got a twenty forty plan that says residential. We put a lot of effort in a twenty forty plan to plan this out. I've got schools around the corner. I've got a massive estate property to the north. I've got homes on the other side, and we're leaving stranded houses there. I do not believe this is the intended use of what we intended to do with the twenty forty plan. I think that when we look at this, if we're gonna go ahead and develop this into a commercial corridor, then we need to take a look at that being a commercial corridor and what needs to be in there. Because as Warren Harling always points out, we're sitting on Planning Commission, it's not what we do today. It's what you're doing that may affect somewhere down the road, which we didn't think about, right? The use today seems fine. The use later on, even though we start doing restrictive natures, could end up with something we don't want within fifty yards or a hundred yards of the school. So again, I'm gonna be in no, only because our twenty forty plan specifically calls that as a residential. And we haven't had any other detailed discussion about changing that area from a residential over to any kind of commercial use. So we're either gonna start piecemealing away our twenty forty plan, which we spent all that time on, or we're gonna take a look at an area in and of itself and say, we're gonna redevelop this, and this is the reason why we want to redevelop it, and here's the reason why we're doing it, and here's the way it needs to look in total, not in piecemeal. So that's my problem.
And so, first I'm hearing this, so what was the discussion before that, I mean, did that come up? I'm assuming you said that before when you voted no.
I did.
What was the response from everyone else?
In my opinion, the, when they did the twenty forty, it was homes, and that's probably why they left it homes. But and and the realtor can verify, those homes have been for sale. Nobody's buying them. Nobody wants to live on one hundred and twenty-sixth with all that traffic. It makes more sense to have small business, not commercial, but a small business like a realtor or something, to fill that in, especially being right next to Oleo Road. It's it's just logical. Right down, I mean, everything down Oleo Road is is going business, and that's budding up to the subdivision right behind. So we restricted it so it doesn't become everything listed under the zoning, and I I think it's a perfect location for the business.
Now, I'll maybe add to what Brad was saying, and then to address both your question and Pete's comments a bit. First of all, related to the comprehensive plan, in in my opinion, and I think this was the intention, I don't think we ever expected that the comprehensive plan would no for certain, if you will, or address with certainty what would happen there. And to me, there were were always going to be situations, sites in particular, that might come back before us, and then we'd have to look at the merits of the zoning request at that time. Certainly, the twenty forty plan was intended to be comprehensive, but also just to serve as a guide in my mind. And quite frankly, I think in so many cases, and I'm not saying this wasn't a a property location that there was a lot of thought given, but I would tell you that in a lot of cases, you know, it was it was more broad-based, and I think it was because it was probably residential. The second thing I'll say is to Pete's concern about commercial, if you will, creeping down one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. I mean, I don't believe that'll happen. Number one, you've got so much existing residential that's already there, and there's only so far it can go. Really, I don't know what the distance is, but let's say it's two hundred feet. I view this very similarly, and I think the the Planning Commission felt the same way, that it's very much like the Shamrock Building along one hundred and sixteenth Street, where there are pockets that there might be commercial, but the concern was, and and what was offered by the petitioner, was that we would limit, as Brad said, the type of commercial that would go there, so that it's not intense, it's it's more professional in nature. And and then also, the petitioner was willing to say, if it was ever developed, it would remain that way. It would be residential in character. So I think there have been a number of things done to address the concerns, and I think the the Planning Commission tried to work through those as well.
But I think if you look at it, though, Rich, if you look at it from the perspective of what you just talked about, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not saying it couldn't be a good commercial corridor, right? But now all of a sudden, we're gonna set a precedent by saying we're gonna change this zoning over to C one use, right? So the other guys now get to put a sign in the front yard saying, well, it's open to change, right? We have ingress egress patterns on on left-hand turns going in and out of that intersection. Oleo Road doesn't have any of those problems going in and left in and left out with a big massive turn lane in the middle. If we're gonna do this, what I'm saying is we need to plan for it. We need to tell those residents so they can sell their houses. If that's really the main reason why we're doing that, we need to get an infrastructure improvement to improve that intersection so you can come back in and out. He's got a low use there, but the next guy beyond them, maybe a medical clinic, that's got a whole bunch of patients that want to put it there, and doesn't look like a house, looks like an office building. My point is, is that I think we're kind of jamming it in there, because he says it's a realtor, and he says it looks like a house, but yet we're setting a precedent that's going on both sides with zero direction, and zero direction, what's gonna happen with that intersection with people moving in and around there? Because it's gonna, it's gonna create a problem, just throwing you down the road.
And I I can agree with Pete. The question I would have is on the Shamrock, because I want to be consistent, too. So I don't want to be doing two different things. Was that in the twenty forty initiative? Does anybody know offhand?
Well, it was already zoned by the time we got there in a C type of use, because we had given it. The Rita's Backyard.
Oh, that's right, yeah. So we had, it was, yeah, you're right.
I think in general, there has been these orphaned properties, if you will, where we have subdivisions, and then you have one home left next to a road.
Yeah.
Have been quizzical properties for us from a what what can be done? Are they going to be completely redeveloped? Are they gonna be renovated? So I think, I think you're both right in this particular point in terms of, I guess it's a diplomatic answer, but Pete's correct that we do, we have not come up with a formal zoning or plan or strategy that says, here's how we would like to see all of those redeveloped. That being said, this project, I think, to some degree epitomizes what we would like to see in terms of a reuse scenario that's low impact in comparison to their neighborhoods. I don't believe Pete is incorrect that we should have a long-term strategy for a lot of these orphaned homes, so to speak, along the our major thoroughfares, but at the same time, I think it's reasonable, and probably why the Plan Commission voted this way, that this project that the petitioner has before you reflects a lot of the things that I think we would ultimately want to see with with a redevelopment of these sites.
And one other point that the developer did the night of the Plan Commission, he's not putting anything out front to look like commercial. All the reconstruction he's doing is behind the home where you won't even see it. The parking's in the back, the expansion's in the back, so what you see in the front right now is basically what you're gonna see when he's done. And and that was at the request of some of the landowners around him, had that concern. We listened to that concern on the Plan Commission, and he was willing to do that. So he's done everything that we asked him to do at the Plan Commission.
Again, I think you're absolutely correct, right? I think the project in and of itself, in almost any other spot, that would already have that that use, for me, would be a hundred percent fine. I would welcome them anywhere they go. I think we're not ready to do that because we're not planned out there yet. That's my major issue, is that we're kind of jumping at it and saying, he wants to be the catalyst, but we're creating problems down the road which were unforeseen, which we're not planning out correctly. So I'm gonna be a no, and I circled it down. I don't mean any disrespect to the petitioner, who's trying to get a business done. That's, as everybody knows, I'm I'm typically all about it, but I mean, that particular area to me has a litany of problems when you start to do this. It just does. It just does.
Disagree.
Which is okay.
Any other questions or comments by council? Move for approval? Motion to approve by Brad. Is there a second? Second by David? All in favor? We may need to go to a roll call if, but all in favor? Aye? What do we get here? Sorry.
Just roll call it.
All right, roll call please.
Eric, you're blocked?
Aye.
Eric, you're blocked? David, you're blocked? Aye. Pete, you're blocked?
No.
So you're blocked? No. Brad, you're blocked?
Yes.
You're blocked? No.
No.
Tabo. Four-four. Automatically continued to next month.
What is the legal difference?
I think it's automatically continued to next month, isn't it?
So what, can you read off the total, please, Shaka?
Eric, you're blocked? Eric, you're blocked? David, you're blocked? Selena, you're blocked? Brad, you're blocked? Selena, you're blocked? Tom, you're blocked?
No, I was a no. And Selena was a no.
Yeah, I think it's four-four.
Four-four.
Let me ask this, to those who voted no, are there any things you would like to have the petitioner consider to the site? Or is it, I mean, is it the end of discussion, if you will, tonight? Because I'd like to either ask for some consideration or a friendly amendment or just to give him some guidance, I guess, at this point.
I agree with Pete in the sense of just for the city to kind of reevaluate that area. Like, let's come up with a plan. Like, is it going to stay residential? Is it going to be a commercial that looks residential? I mean, I don't know. I think once we, once we say yes, then it's the catalyst for everything and I think we just carefully kind of plan that area would be in our best interest. And so if we can do that, then kind of...
So I will just add. So the property directly to the west of this is also looking at remodeling that into an office-type use and keeping that residential home. So those two properties, the existing structures would stay and it'd be low-intensity commercial. That is what is planned short-term. And staff agrees with those proposed uses on those properties because of the unattractiveness from a residential standpoint, as they currently sit.
If I could say a couple of words. Those two lots are the only two residential lots east of Hawksland in there. So you've got Grace Church to the right and then Grace to the south of me. So there's two residential houses. Actually, there's only three between Brook School and Oleo, residential lots on the south side of 116th Street, or 126th Street, sorry. And both these properties, the one right next to me and mine, have been vacant for two years. Yeah. And the one next door, I think, is only selling because they saw that mine sold. I think it's going to be insurance or something like that. So, I mean, I just don't see, people aren't buying them residential. Everything in Fishers is selling in like a day and these sit here for a year, two years on the market.
I think it's best just to have a conversation, figure out where, what the strategy is from the city perspective and, because I think there's just even more dialogue. So I don't know what the right course is of that. I'm just saying, that's, that would be my opinion, because I am not against what you're trying to do. I'm absolutely not. I want to make sure what dominoes fall after that is the right thing for the community here. So I think I'm echoing kind of what Pete was saying. I just don't want to beat a dead horse.
So just to clarify, what happens from here then?
Well, no. So the voters didn't receive a positive recommendation from you. So if you would like to reconsider it, we can vote on a reconsideration to table it for a future meeting or to send it back to the Plan Commission for consideration of a broader zoning consideration. But you all have voted, so we need to either stick with the vote or reconsider the vote that was taken to take another action.
Does it have a 90-day window?
It does have a 90-day window. But that's from the Plan Commission action that you just acted upon.
As a member of the Plan Commission, I think we did everything we could. It was an eight-to-one vote in favor of. The petitioner did everything we asked him to do. I don't think there's anything more we can ask him to do. He's leaving it residential looking, I mean, he's leaving it residential, basically the house. It's going to be an office. Everything is behind it, the parking, the addition. So when you go down the street, it's going to look like a house. I don't think there's anything more we can ask the petitioner to do and it's a great place to fill in, as the mayor said, these unique situations. I wouldn't want to live on 126th in a house with kids backing out of the driveway, et cetera, on 126th. I think it's a great use and there's only two lots there. That's all we're going to do.
I will, I will say this. I want to speak to the process because what concerns me with our vote is that in some ways, we're rendering a decision by the Planning Commission, who had a much more detailed discussion, ineffective. And that concerns me and how we review all cases because it was, except for one negative vote, an eight-to-one vote. So I just want to be sensitive about that, you know, from a process standpoint. And that does concern me because as Brad said, I think we went through and worked through a lot of issues.
Did neighbors all show up? Listen to all neighbors? Discuss with the neighbors? The petitioner responded to the neighbors? I think we did everything in our responsibility to protect the neighbors and we asked the petitioner to do what we act in to satisfy the neighbors. And the look was one of the big things to keep up with, to make sure.
But, but in fairness here, I don't know that, I think Todd, you recommended that you wanted some additional time and...
I think we need additional time to discuss whatever that course is, just so we make sure we're making the right decision for petitioner, for the city. Because I hear what Pete's saying and I agree with that. The difference between 100, that's why I asked. The difference between 116th Street Shamrock Development, there was already commercial zone there. And this, we just, I just want to make sure we have that discussion as a council, as, you know, with the city and to see what the best strategy is and, you know what I'm saying?
Todd, I know what you're saying, but we've already, I corrected, I'm wrong. We've filled in probably 116th, the same situation we're doing here.
I think one recommended path, because this does seem a bit rushed in this conversation, is you could rescind your vote. You could have a motion to rescind your vote and take, you can send this back to Plan Commission, not to necessarily discuss this individual property, but if there's a, Pete raised a concern about not having an overall plan and figuring out how this fits into that overall plan or whether we're talking about a broader strategy for this corner or what have you. That, that's a discussion that can occur certainly as an opportunity. But you would have to rescind your vote to really, and send it back to Plan Commission or you guys can just continue to have the conversation here, either way.
And Mayor, just to remind them, you have 90 days from when the Plan Commission approved the, its proposal to you to take a vote on this. So if you were to rescind your vote, you could allow additional time to collaborate.
So, yeah. And to be, you know, to fair to John too, to be part of this vote, because that might, that might change things. That might, you know, I don't know.
Well, we definitely do. One way or another.
But what, my question, okay, to go back to this. So on the west side of that, of the proposed area, what was planned? What, did you say something was coming to us?
Well, I...
Was it the west or is it the east side?
There may be somebody with an insurance company.
Okay.
So, yeah, a rezone petition has been filed for that property to rezone it to C1 for an office-type use.
And has there been any action taken or discussion to the east of that at all, that we know of?
No. So that's a part, directly to the east is still a part of the Grace Church property. I believe that they maybe had a Phase 2 development, but I haven't seen those plans. We may have them on file.
You mean that home that's right there at the corner of Oleo?
No, it's to the west of there, Todd.
You can see it, Todd.
Yeah, there's a little... There's a big gaping space there that they're...
Probably counting...
Two, I think there's two houses still left facing HSE.
So these are still residential?
Correct.
This is, right?
Correct.
All the way up here?
Right. Then you've got a house just to the west of that.
This is what you're talking about?
Correct.
Yes. Like, there's different insurance and others.
So I just think, you know, with, I agree with Pete that with regard to all that, let's just make sure there's, there's a master plan there that's, that some, that we have dialogue on. If there's a way just to suspend, you know, delay this, table this, I would recommend that.
Look, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to rescind the vote, but I'm going to want to go ahead and give some clarity here to what we want to do and we're going to need to do it rapidly, right? So I'll make a motion to rescind the vote.
Okay. Motion by Pete to rescind the vote, second by Selena.
Rescind and do what?
Are we going to, are we going to take it back? Yeah, that's probably a good question.
I probably will go back and then offer a table for 30 days so we can get John back here, okay? And let him be aware of the vote.
And then bring it back to council?
And then you can either bring it back in its present form, which I will vote no on again, or we can try to go ahead and do some planning as it relates to that area.
Continued it for 30 days.
Right.
Okay.
So I think that's fair.
Do I, do you do this together or separate, Chris?
Do it separate.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, rescind the vote and I believe you had a second.
And you have a second.
Second by Selena. So Pete's made a motion, second by Selena to rescind the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good.
And now I'll make a motion to table for 30 days, okay?
Oh, you go ahead.
I want to make sure that I'm being clear. I have no issues with your project, but I need to make sure that the planning department is going to come forward. We just had Greg O'Hara in here on a project which we sent back, which is already C1 because it wasn't residential enough, right? So now all of a sudden, someone comes down to that house and wants to buy it for insurance purposes. I don't really like the house in my insurance purposes. I'm going to build it all brand-new. You guys like brand-new. We're going to build brand-new. Well, what is it going to look like? And is that going to be continued on? Is it going to go around the corner? What are we going to do? The other thing which I want to address too, is what are we going to do with traffic when somebody's got to pull out and go left? Are we going to send them on a U-turn out and around 126th Street? When they've got 3 o'clock and 8 o'clock buses coming over there, going hell, damnation through there? Got to have a plan in this thing, okay? Not just for his business, but for all those other businesses that may fill in there and have bigger use. That's all I'm trying to say. Because if we don't change any of that and they come back with the same thing, I'll be a hard no and I'll continue to speak very outwardly about it. So that's my deal with this. We're way too close to the schools to not have a plan, how to deal with this whole thing in entirety.
So how...
It's a motion to continue.
I think staff has clear direction on what the delivery will be.
So staff will be communicating back to council?
Do we need to vote on that? Because I don't think we voted on the motion. I second it, but I don't know if we had a vote on that.
The second is to table the motion, correct, for 30 days?
Correct.
For further staff input and discussion?
Pete made the motion. I second it.
Todd?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second, or opposed? Very good. All right.
For the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is for a text amendment to the Preserve at Bridger Pines PUD to revise the name of the PUD to the Preserve at Arbor Pines and also to reduce the size of the planning strip width between the curb and sidewalk. I'm not going to go too much in detail with this request. Council did hear the first part of the approval for this kind of correction. I will say, for Arbor Pines, last month, you guys approved a right-of, partial right-of-way vacation in the Preserve at Arbor Pines due to the as-built location of water meter pits. This is the second half of that approval, so they're coming in for a text amendment to reduce the planning strip width. So that way the sidewalk will not be over these water meter pit lids. With that, the name of the subdivision has changed from the Preserve at Bridger Pines to the Preserve at Arbor Pines. And so we are having them do some cleanup with the name as a part of this text amendment. Here's the street cross-sections. The top one is the approved cross-street and the one below is the proposed. So you guys had approved the right-of-way vacation for the three-feet right-of-way vacation and now it'll be that planning strip width from seven and a half to six feet will be reduced. Petitioner is here to speak, but I don't know if there's anything additional that you have to add.
Any further questions or comments for council?
Motion? Second?
All right, motion by Eric, second by Pete. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business or new business?
I just have one question for staff. There is somebody on 116th Street, I think, building a big, long trench that looks like they're coming out in the, in an unincorporated area to tie into our sewer system. Who is that? And are they annexing themselves into the city?
Oh, I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I mean...
116th or 126th?
I think it's 116th. It's down by Fritz.
Isn't it?
Well, there's one on 126th that they're doing.
Is it 126th? I think, I thought it was 116th.
On the north side?
It'll be on the north side of the street, yeah.
Yeah, there's one on 126th.
The big, long trench is going out. That property's been there forever and a day. Looked like they were trying to tie in the sewer. I just want to make sure they're in the city, okay?
Good point. Anything else? All right. Item 22, community comments. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes, yes, speak? Go ahead. You'll have three minutes. You'll introduce yourselves, state your name and address.
My name is Loke David and I am a resident here at Fishers at 2222. I just have a question about the crew car wash, that product, which we've seen earlier. First of all, I'm excited to see that there was a mention, you made it a, not to be fine with it, but that it's a community that you have a question. A few clarification questions. If I recall some clarification, you saw that they're maintaining 32 jobs or they're maintaining 32 jobs, about $6 million of investment moving to headquarters and selling a car wash there. My question relates to this. There was an email sent pretty early on back in February to a number of people trying to garner support for that project. And I remember three, as they're describing, you know, what benefits are to the community. They mentioned this will be an investment of $5 million and crew is not asking any tax incentives or money from the city. So I'm curious of what the conditions were that caused us to want to make that investment. I think I J quoted that at $1.5 million. There's senior tax payment plus the impact fee waiver. So what were the circumstances around that? That's part one of the question. Part two is, what can, what can members of residents of the community expect to see for that $1.5 million investment that we're making in that project?
Anybody want to?
I can clarify that.